All right, good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, February 2nd, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. I'll order that stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction to board members. To my far left, we have Paul Immatucci, and then Jerry Graybill, myself, Michael LaRue. We have Phil Roy, Don Ganarelli, and Cameron Haladic. Right?
Yep.
All right. Then we have Dave Andreessen from the Planning and Code Technician, and Irish Griffith from Code Enforcement Officer, and Lee J. Feldman from SMPDC. Okay. I'll open the first public comment.
Is there any way we could do the same thing where he speaks first, but we know where we were?
Yeah, but that won't be in the public comment. That's for stuff that's not related to what we're talking about on the agenda.
So new public comments?
Yes, yep. No public comments. There's no public hearing, so the next is the approval of minutes for January 19, 2022. I was not here, so I will be recusing myself.
I had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last board meeting. They are inaccurate. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second? Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Next is Old Business Preliminary Major Subdivision, MAP 36, Lot 38, The Burwick's, Pine Hill Road, and Cemetery Road. Civil Consultants.
Hi, everyone. Neil Reposa with Civil Consultants here on behalf of Pine Hill Realty. This is the same project that's been before you several times here. There have not been any modifications to the plan since the last planning board meeting beyond. We've begun putting the conditions of approval that we think will be implemented in there, but we're still waiting for the final conditions to get the final plans for signature to make sure all of the issues are addressed. There's no real new information to present, so if there's any questions that have come up, I'm happy to answer them, and the pleasure of the board is tonight.
Dave, has he been provided a copy of the finding of fact that you drafted, or that was drafted, with the conditions?
No. It wasn't online either.
Gotcha. Should we read those conditions, or is that at a later?
When you go to approve it, or not approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't get to say until you vote.
No, you're gonna read them.
Yeah, we're gonna go through them.
We'll read them.
I'll be more than happy to email a copy of the conditions of approval and the findings of fact.
Lee J., do you have anything to add?
I don't. I did provide the recommended conditions of approval to David for him to put into his findings of fact, and I hope that I was able to address all of the issues that the abutters had concerns about the last meeting, and unless you as board members choose to add or change anything from there, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, and the conditions of approval and the findings of fact literally just changed at 4:45.
Okay.
So that's why they weren't posted online, but I'd be more than happy to make a copy for anybody that would want a copy, but they literally just changed.
Is there a requirement for us, Dave, to put those out before we vote on them for public comment? Is that, is there?
No, there's never been.
Okay.
Lee J.?
This is just what we've been discussing as it's been going along.
Lee J., am I correct?
That is correct. They do not require public comment, and they are merely the conditions, if accepted, and required as part of the development for the planning board to approve.
Great.
So we're not at completeness yet?
We haven't voted that.
Right.
Right?
We haven't gone to completeness of the application.
I believe you did, only because you've held your public hearing and you've closed your public hearing.
Yeah, we did, we did, Lee J.
Yeah.
I believe where we left off is we accepted the, that, and we were gonna conditions to add it to it, and I think that's where we're at, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but I don't think we ever actually took a vote on completeness.
Could be mistaken. I'd have to look at previous minutes.
Well, I know the, on Lee J.'s thing, it's highlighted still for vote for completion, conditions of approval, vote for approval of the plan, and the findings of fact.
See, we do all three.
Yeah. Good. The waivers were approved, the high-intensity soil survey, and then the MAP scale not less than one inch to 40 feet. So the first would be the vote for completion.
Right, so you granted the waivers, the two waivers, which then would suggest that the rest of the application is complete because the applicant requested those waivers from their submission information, and that was granted, and so those were the only two requests that the applicant had. So as far as completion goes, I believe you can find the application complete and then move on to the next step.
Okay, so this is the conditions of approval. I'll read all of them as we go through them. So right now, number one, all sewer design plans must be reviewed and approved by the Burwick's Sewer District prior to construction. The Burwick Sewer District also requires construction observation during the installation of the sewer infrastructure. escrow accounts must be in place prior to review or construction observation by the Sewer District. The project is conditioned on all written materials submitted to the board during the review process. Number three, the conformance with Article 13 of the subdivision regulations. The applicant shall provide a performance guarantee with the final submission application. Number four, the rock walls shall never be removed or altered on the property. Sorry, I'm just about to sneeze, I feel it. All right, five. During construction, all earth-moving materials shall be contained on site and all areas where bamboo is identified. The bamboo shall be eradicated in order to eliminate potential spread of the bamboo. Six, any centrally located trash receptacles shall be screened and shall only be emptied, collected during the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. All monetization, monumentation, there we go, sorry, of the property shall meet the standards identified in Article 12, Section 12.8 of the subdivision regulations. And number eight, the applicant shall work with the abutters to identify the type of buffer they would like, i.e. a six-foot fence or arborvitae plantings. So those are the conditions.
But that sounds like what you talked, what we talked about, Neil, correct?
Nothing shocking there.
Yep.
We did put together a cost estimate to address what the town thought was appropriate for a performance guarantee, and Lee J. did go through that and came up with a number that the applicant was okay with getting. We do need to have at least a conditional approval for him to go to the bank and get that letter of credit, but he was fine with the letter, the number that Lee J. came up with, so.
May I ask you a question? Lee J., is there a monetary value or a formula to calculate what the escrow account should have in it for the sewer issue? It's kind of ambiguous and open-ended.
So there's no, well, the formula based is basically the cost of materials, which includes any backfill materials, any crush stone that needs to go in, any of the actual sewer materials and the such. That is a number that is worked out with the sewer district. We don't do that on our own, so the sewer district had been involved, I would assume, at this point with Neil on putting that number together.
Okay, so our sewer district comes up with that number?
Well, they work with the applicant to make sure that it's an adequate number, yes.
They work with the applicant and Underwood Engineer who does the sewer review for the town.
Okay.
So where we're at with that one is we've just engaged with Underwood, and they get a whole separate escrow fee for their review and everything.
Gotcha.
So that comes right from the applicant to the sewer district, and then the sewer district contracts with them. So still in the works with that one, so that doesn't, there's no connection allowed until all that gets reviewed and approved through them.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Chair?
I got two questions. Based on our last meeting, there were some items we talked about. There's an existing culvert. We said that could possibly condition that it does not get altered or anything because it drains the one property. Does that need to go in? The conditions here as well?
May I? I believe that was in the area that Neil has untouched on there. That's not being developed.
Correct.
So we're all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing I had was, where'd it go? I think we addressed it. I don't think it needs to be put in here, but there was brought up about paving that. There's no way they can pave that right away or anything like that, right?
Correct, the easement area cannot be paved.
What happened to the other thing I had here? There was two. I guess that's it. Really, this has been crossed off, so.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the conditions approval as drafted.
Nope.
Okay, I'll second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Next is the vote for approval of the plan.
Findings of fact.
The findings of fact, sorry.
Are you done with that property? That's it, it's over?
Not yet.
No, sir.
That's almost.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Lee J., what's next for this application?
Next would be a final motion to approve the application as presented with the inclusion of the findings of fact, which they've already done, and all conditions as proposed.
Would that be this meeting or the next meeting?
That could be done at this meeting.
No.
Okay.
Just be ready to do that.
Okay, all right. So we're looking for a motion for completeness?
Yep.
I will make a motion to find the application complete with the conditions.
Approved.
Approved.
Yep, there we go.
I will make a motion to approve the finding of fact and the conditions of approval.
No.
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 Approve the application.
I will make a motion to approve the application.
Will you speak with the abutters about the bushes and stuff? When do they do that?
That's in the amendment.
Did we read the? Yeah, that was in the conditions.
It is in the conditions.
There's no
It just says they'll speak to us, but I mean, about it, but when do they do that?
Their time. It's not something that we really condition. That's just something that's
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Neil. Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me. All right. There's certain times to talk and there's certain times not to talk, and we've already done the public hearing and already heard what the public has had to say. We've already adjusted everything according, and we've conditioned everything as needed. After that, the system
You can discuss it. I can talk to the outside.
Yep.
I think just as a general thing, in these things, you need to make it really clear for people that don't do this all the time, that really this is it, and the public hearing is ending. Each time you say it, each time, but now you, last time it was like, we're apparently done, and we didn't have any, it was really done, and we'd never be able to say anything again. So it's just somehow
It's hard because 75
Make sure that people don't
Once
And I'm not supposed to be talking, but
It's hard because
We would get our questions answered, and it could take six months.
Okay. Moving forwards, we have a motion on table. We haven't already voted.
Phil, could you make your motion again?
I'll make a motion to find the application complete.
No.
No.
Approve.
I will make a motion to
We want to make a motion to approve the application with the findings of fact and finding the application complete, just so you cover it all.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application with the amended conditions and find the application complete.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Now, just so folks know, because I can't see anything, but I could hear the conversation, that there is a 30-day period which you could retain someone to file an appeal to Superior Court if you chose to do that, as what would be an aggrieved abutter. So please understand, you do have that ability afforded to you as well.
And who would hear that?
The Superior Court, York, in York County.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Lee J., what's the way ahead for this application?
The way ahead for the application is they need to get their bond letter of credit, some sort of certi in place. I would suggest that there be a waiting period of 30 days. That's their choice, or if they choose to do that, before they forge ahead and pull any permits that may be needed for construction. They're probably still working out some of the details with Underwood Engineering on the sewer line. And the 30-day period would be in case any of these folks choose to file an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, in Old Business, revision to land use ordinance and subdivision regulations.
Okay. What we have here, we work with Kristy Robaska. She's been to a couple meetings. This was advertised in the newspaper twice. We're gonna have a public hearing on this the next meeting of the 16th. This is the latest, truest copy that I have that we will be voting on. If you guys, not tonight, we have the public hearing first, and then you'll vote on this on the 16th, and then I'll present this to the selectmen, the select boards, excuse me. This is everything that we've been working on the last three or four meetings, and she's done a good job in compiling everything. This is not just the town of Burwick. This is pretty much every municipality in Maine.
If I may?
Yes.
Yes, so Kristy works through our office on these, although we're not overly involved. We just kind of pay the bill for that stuff. It's called MS4 Communities. They are the communities that have to meet the Federal Stormwater Clean Water Act, which you are one, and the town of York is one, and I believe Elliott is one, and Kristy is basically going from town to town and updating the ordinances to meet the new federal standard requirements.
South Burwick is one, too.
Yes, thank you, South Burwick, yep. And David is right. I mean, there are many towns that are MS4 towns throughout the state that are needing to update their regulations. It's not just the cluster down in your area. There are many communities that need to update their regulations for MS4.
Dave, do we have, it's just we've gone through a couple revisions of this. Do we happen to have one that we have track changes on? And the only reason I ask, there's a lot of stuff that's lined out.
The stuff that's lined out is the existing stuff?
It is.
That will be taken out?
Yep.
I got you. So the one thing that
Is what's going in.
Say that again?
The underline
Underline is going in. The one thing that jumps out at me is the post-construction. It was drafted as the person shall at least annually inspect, clean, and maintain. If we remove annually, I'm not seeing a periodicity, Pete. Oh, wait. 60 days, okay, 60 days.
Yeah, it's gotta be maintained annually. I live in a subdivision downtown, and I know that it's gotta be maintained every year.
Oh, I see that.
Somebody from the planning department
It's in revision.
Comes out. Somebody from the planning department comes out with Kristy or whoever else from her office and will, you know, inspect it.
Okay, I see it now. It says on July 1st. I hadn't seen that, so, okay. Got it.
That's blocks. I have a copy of the annual inspection. Just makes it look where it's been taken.
Right.
And then the 30 days for the notice of violation.
Right.
Okay, so there's no action on that tonight because of the public hearing? Next.
What I'm gonna ask is, you have the latest copy there? Does everything look good to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would the next revision have
No, there's
Well, the next revision will just be the possible public input on it.
I got you.
So if anyone comes in and has any other things that they need to speak about it, that's when we'll
The public hearing will be on the 16th.
And then if there's no, there might not be any changes to that, and then we'll vote on it. If there's changes, then we'll amend something, and then we'll vote on it.
Got you.
But what you see in front of you will be voted on by this board on the 16th.
Okay.
Yep.
I've already advertised in the newspaper, and I'm gonna advertise on the town's website, and
It's gotta go through because it's gotta get to the selectmen, right?
Right. So what you see there is what you're gonna be voting on.
Yep.
Should the one we vote on be the final edit without the lined-out stuff, or do we need to leave that?
No, that stays.
That stays.
That just shows what goes and what stays.
I got you.
That's to show you guys what used to be in there, what's not, but
And that's what, does the public get that, too, as well?
The public will get that when I submit it to the select board.
So they can see the changes, so they're not
Absolutely.
50 people asking, well, what did you change to get that?
Absolutely.
Makes sense.
There you go.
Any further comments, question?
Yeah, it looks like it reflects everything that we had gone back and forth with a couple of times on, so, yeah, it looks like a good copy.
All right, so moving right along, there's no new business. I'll open up the second public comment. No one here, no one on Zoom other than Lee J., so I'll close the second public comment and open up informational items.
You guys did an excellent job on this application. When I used to be on the planning board, I always say that one out of every 20 applications gets this, we would have to extend the, we would have to extend the public hearing. So with the public hearing, one of the things that I was doing when we had a lot of people for the public hearing was doing the five minutes you can talk for, and then you can go sit down. Once everybody's talked, then you can have three minutes that you can come back up here and everybody can talk. That was what I did for these, but we did that last meeting, and I think that is something that we should really stick to because we kind of see how things can go awry. And it's not that we made it up. The townspeople voted on it, so we didn't just make it up. We made it up, but then the townspeople voted on it.
It is in the policy.
It is in the policy. It is in the policy.
Right, and I think they didn't understand that they had, you know, two meetings where they had their time. Usually it's only one, but we kept it open. They all talked last time. We addressed every one of their comments, at least between the board and what
But I think it's important to note that their comments did not go unaddressed, and the majority of those comments were put in as conditions of approval.
Right.
So it did not fall on deaf ears, and I feel as board members, we certainly did our due diligence in meeting, you know, the requirements of developer, but more importantly, making it, you know, acceptable and palatable to the abutters. And I feel like we did a great job at that.
Especially the guy with the driveway coming straight out. He was very happy that they moved it, so he did not get the lights.
That's the way that this is supposed to work.
Right, and he even acknowledged that to me. He said that was great, so
I think it's more or less, a lot of the public isn't too sure of our procedures on how we do, how everything works and flows, and they don't really realize that we don't have much power. It's just a matter of, does it fit the land use ordinance or not? And if it does, what are the things that the abutters don't like about it that we can change? The things that we can change, we will. If we can't, then it lines up with our
I always said, there was a lot of applications that would come through that I didn't like and that I didn't, I just, I had a real heartache with, but because of the regulations, I had to approve it.
Yep.
And I would use that time leading up to the town election in June to make a change to the manuals, and that's, you know, and I think there was twice, and that was what we had the changes for, so. But thank you for trudging ahead, and I think that we got, we know what we need to do now, five and three-minute rule.
May I?
Yes.
I'm just curious if Lee J. has any suggestions, having watched this whole thing play out, any suggestions for the board or for Dave or I going forward at meetings?
Oh, thanks, Irish. I appreciate the ask. The only thing that I think we could work on, if I can find the time, and I certainly need to for you folks, in the sense that you're one of our, you know, steady clients, is there may be an opportunity to draft out the process for you to have in front of you at every meeting so that you know, you know, what the steps are you need to follow, and your voting process and procedures. Don't get it wrong, I mean, it's very complicated when you're sitting there. It was a little clunky tonight, but it wasn't bad. We got through it, but I think that I could work with staff to with staff to develop a one-page sheet that just tells you what you need to do.
Thanks.
Okay, I have just two things real quick. Dave does have something that he's already started working on for that, so that's great. He started working on that today. There's also a workshop through Maine Municipal Association that I have purchased for planning board and Board of Appeals, because obviously I deal more with Board of Appeals. Do you think that would be beneficial for the planning board to sit in, maybe do like a joint workshop and play it for my board and this board?
Absolutely. You know, I, pre-COVID, I used to do a lot of live workshops like that for several boards in a region all the time, and we got away from that during the COVID process. And I've been asked by a couple of towns about doing workshops. I think we're at the point where if, for example, Burwick, your planning board folks wanted me to come in, which I will start doing, I was planning on being there tonight, but my car is not with me. It's in the shop right now. So, but doing a workshop on policies and procedures is something that we could certainly do for the board, and I would suggest, yes, watch the videotape with the Board of Appeals. Some of their process is a little different than the planning board, but don't hesitate to put together some questions and notes, and we can get together and talk about that stuff.
Well, the Maine Municipal one's supposed to have planning board and Board of Appeals stuff, so I think it would be beneficial for both, maybe, and then they can draft questions, and then maybe when you do a workshop for us, you can kind of tailor it towards what their questions are.
Absolutely. Yep, yep. Every town operates a little different, you know, and MMA is going to give you a canned presentation, which is fine. They're covering the laws and the procedures, and then we can tailor some of your questions to the way you folks operate, so.
Just a basic overview, and then it might make it a little easier since we are throwing a lot of work on Dave and Lee J. to make it so it's a little less cumbersome when it comes time for that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, perfect. So Dave, you can work that one out. You can work that out.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, that was it. Sorry. Didn't mean to intrude.
So, got this application approved? That's great. We're not going to see Neil, hopefully, for a while, you know, because hopefully he's not going to be back here.
Till the next project.
Till the next project. Speaking of the next project, we're not going to discuss it, but I just want to let you know that the 16th, we're going to have, ATAR Engineering's going to be coming by to do the Long Swamp Road, Alley Pond Road, and I'm going to be talking to Lee J., and most likely this will be Hannah's go-around, but I info them on both of them. So I just got the plans dropped off today for this, literally like four o'clock. So that will be coming up. And then, finally, the only other thing I have is we need some nameplates. So I've got my old nameplate here. You've got, you can use your nameplate.
Yeah, I've got mine.
You guys don't have your nameplate, and neither does Matt, so I've got new nameplates. Finally, I figured out how to order them. So you're going to be getting nameplates. So does anybody have anything for me?
Okay. All right. Okay. No update on South Burwick, right?
The last email Dave sent us, it's the next meeting is what?
It might be, it might be the 15th.
Yeah, 15th. It might be. They don't know yet.
Right now, they're going through a transition with their town planner, code enforcement officer. It's still the same person, but I'm getting, the information that I'm getting will, I will immediately get it out to you.
So in that case, Jen has been coordinating and talking with me on a daily basis about a lot of things. I'm not acting as much as the planner for them as I do for you folks, but she talks with me almost daily about things, and I did ask her about Sam, about that project. Coming back, and we are waiting on the applicant, but I think they are going to be coming back soon on this project. You will be notified, absolutely.
Yes, it looks like, it looks like it's going to be the Wednesday before the next meeting, according to Jennifer's last email, because they weren't going to be ready for. But I will let you guys know as soon as possible.
Anything else for informational items?
I'm sorry.
No? All right.
If there are no further items for consideration from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Burwick Town Hall, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. Good night.